I call the March 6, 2024, Apple Valley Planning Commission Meeting to order. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Madam Chair, we have no changes for you tonight.
Thank you. Any changes from commissioners?
Move approval.
Second.
Was moved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent. Consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a commissioner or citizen requests to have any items separately considered. It will then be moved to the land use action items for consideration. This will be approval for 3A, the minutes, and B, the parks referendum. I would like to make note on one thing on the minutes. For the public hearing from February 7, it says Chair Kurtz opened the public hearing, and I was not there that day.
I will make the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Salute. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Schindler. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. This brings us to number four, which is our annual business meeting. So tonight, we will be voting on nominating the approved for the officers. If there is only one nomination, we will just do, you know, motion like we usually do, but if there's more than one, then we will do a ballot. So let's start with, let me get there first. Nominations for Chair. Do I hear any nominations for the Chair?
Madam Chair, I nominate Jody Kurtz with a position.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, if there's not, then do I get it moved first? Or do we?
You can move that.
Okay, can somebody move that?
I move we nominate Jody Kurtz as President or Chair.
I wouldn't want to be President.
Second, third, win.
Okay, that was approved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Mahowald. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Okay, that motion carries. Next is Vice Chair. Same will go for this. If there's only one nomination, we will vote or just approve that, and if more, we will do a ballot. Do I hear any nominations for Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I recommend myself for Vice Chair position.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, do I get approval on that one?
Motion to approve Paul Scanlon as Vice Chair.
Okay, anybody second?
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Mahowald and seconded by Commissioner Schindler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Next up is for the Secretary. Do we have any nominations for Secretary?
Madam Chair, I recommend David Schindler for Secretary position.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, motion?
Madam Chair, I recommend David Schindler for Secretary.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Scanlon and seconded by Commissioner Mahowald. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. So for 2024, Chair is Jody Kurtz. Vice Chair is Paul Scanlon, and Secretary is David Schindler.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You officers for 2024.
Oh, and I just would like to point out, if I may, Tim.
Yes.
Is that the City Council reappointed Commissioner Mahowald and Commissioner Sandell for another three-year term. All other commissioners are serving within their three-year terms, so congratulations to you two. Next on the agenda. Next on the agenda, Mr. Tim Benetti on the Planning, 2023 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. It's a pleasure and a privilege to always, every year, bring this wonderful Planning Commission Annual Report. As you can probably tell, it's got a lot of information in it because we had, I think, another banner and busy year, and you're going to see some of this, some of the stuff that our wonderful team of planners and other staff members worked on. So again, just to recap, these are your Chair, Vice Chair positions. We do have note that Commissioner Deekman did, unfortunately, had to resign his position back in December, and we're actively seeking that seventh position. I've been, from the understanding from our clerk, that we do have a few applicants in the system right now, and I think they're still open until the 15th of March, so we hope to have someone in that seat very, very soon. Also point out that congratulations to Commissioner Mahowald and Sandell for, again, agreeing to be reappointed for another three-year term. Congratulations. We had 32 applications, and they're split out between the zoning ordinance amendments, CUPs, the subdivisions, site plan reviews, variances. Last year, we had about 50, so, you know, slightly down, but still, again, a very busy As you know, these are the keys to our Apple Valley's vision. These are memorialized in our current comp plan, and they just provide for a backdrop to what we see as keys to our vision, service, great place to live, business oriented, safe, parks experience, healthy and active, and so on. So these are the keys that we like to view or value our projects on. This is a map our team put together. This is development projects for 2023. Again, these are either ongoing or potential projects that we might be seeing up in the next year. So you're seeing Eagle Point Fire Station, CMF, Woodlands, Eighth, Johnny Cake Business. So some of these are either have recently been completed or still in process, but they're just a good idea, identification to see what we have out there going on, which is a nice map just for verification. We have Orchard Place map here. This is our land use map. Again, you probably know that this mostly covers that gravel pit area. We are still working with the applicants to provide for that zoning ordinance at mixed-use business campus. We hope to have that done very, very shortly here sometime in the future, which will come back to you. But again, we're getting a lot of good activity and some good traction down that area out there for some new businesses, which you're probably going to see coming up through this year as well. One of the main things that we approved up there is, I'm sure hopefully most of you have been there, the Lunds and Byerways at 15550 English Avenue. This is at 44,000 square foot grocery, deli, cafe store, which officially opened in 2023 of September. Again, a great event. I believe some of you were there. It's good to see a lot of people there for this event. A nice, very nice looking store inside, too. Complementing that, Lunds and Byerways is our Schuler Shoes, and again, 15560 English Avenue, about an 8,000 square foot facility. And again, some really nice decorative features or architectural features on this building, so they really matched in very well with the Lunds and Byerways next door. We also have next door to this also Chase Bank, and you've probably driven out there, seen that it is currently under construction. They hope to be open in spring or summer of 2024, probably mid-20 summer. Very proud to present Dix Valley Service, 5905 Upper 147th Street. Again, marrying some of the architectural features on their other facility. This is our second facility, so they're still keeping the first one, the original one. Again, Dix has been in the city for a very long time, locally owned, operated by the Tuttel families. Wonderful family to work with. We do a lot of business with them, and they handle a lot of our towing and service needs as well. So again, this 15,500 square foot facility, just brand new, and if you had a chance to review it, they haven't done an open house yet or ribbon cutting yet, but we hope for that in the future. Hope to have you out there if possible. Our Higher Ground Daycare, again, this at 14605 Glacier. So we approved the CUP and building permit for this back in 2023. It was expected to open in mid-2024. After the approvals happened, the owner initially dropped off or dropped out due to maybe some unforeseen cause, but then they came back and said, yep, we're back in. So right now, you're seeing some work being done. They got their construction fences up. It's now going to be referred to as Guide Post Montessori. And so Higher Ground Daycare was the original application name, but Guide Post Montessori will be the name of the school. Our Obsidian Strip Mall, again, this is at 15748 Emperor Avenue. This is just south of where the new Caribou and near the liquor store. This is a new 5,000 square foot multi-tenant. Originally, we had planned for a personal fitness center to go in there as a main tenant. They unfortunately withdrew, so we still don't see a building there, but it's still been approved, ready to go as soon as they do get some new tenant spaces or tenant activity in there. You probably have recognized this, not really, this new building is the new Popeyes Restaurant going right in front of the Aldi's Burlington Coat Factory store right off of Cedar. This is 7515 153rd. Again, this is a 2,500 square foot new Popeyes Restaurant. It began construction in 2023 with an expected completion of summer 2024. Sorry, this ain't the best picture, but this is all I could get last Friday. Very proud to introduce this one or highlight this, Seeridge Marketplace, Hempel Real Estate, Hempel? A beautiful marquee building on Seer Avenue, and I think this is what true, a good architectural, a good looking building can look like. And this is for Caribou, and we also just soon to be open a salon, Astoria, and North Memorial Blood Center has also signed up, so the building is now full, so, or will be full. Began in late 2022, completed in 2023, had a great opening in Caribou Coffee around that September date, so great facility inside there as well. So great location, again, great architecture. Health Partners Clinic, again, in the Orchard Place at 15350 English Avenue. It's about three quarters done. I'd say expected opening in summer 2024. Again, a great building, great product in the city. Also next door, little bit different architectural, of course, but this is Shafan Veterinary Clinic. This is a husband and wife team that are coming, just, I think, recently relocated back to the Twin Cities area, and they're expected to have a grand opening again in spring of 2024. What you see on the upper is the architectural rendering or image, and down below is a picture taken last Friday. Sorry about the outhouse in the front. Apple Valley Lincoln, again, a great redevelopment of the former Apple Valley Auto Mall properties. You probably saw the, you know, the before and after, and I think we've made a great improvement there. This is a 20,000 square foot auto dealership with new and used vehicles. Again, this is just a picture of the artist's rendering. The pictures I took that day just didn't come out that well, so I decided to go with this one. Hopefully, you get the picture, but this is what they built, basically, and it's a very nice facility. Very proud to also introduce Homshuck and Bodega 42. Homshuck is Hispanic or an old Incan or Mayan name, Alex?
Yeah.
For corn or the spirit of corn, I believe, and Bodega 42 represents the market and the 42 represents highway or kind of road 42. 21,350 square foot class one restaurant with a butcher deli opened in October 23, as you know, on the little grand opening picture on the bottom right there. Again, they've got a great patio, great seating, great ambiance inside the bar restaurant, great food. As I can attest, or hopefully most of us can attest, Mexicans want my favorite food, and they do great Mexican dishes here. My Salon Suites, this was a new building that went at 6906 153rd, about 10,000 square feet. Believe it or not, it contains up to 48 individual suites potentially for stylist beauticians and personal care service providers. So these are like independent stylist or salons that can go in there. They can either rent one or multiple suites, and then they just have their own little combined businesses in a two-story building. And a nice building, nice feature, nice open house there back in October. Floor and decor, the old AMC Theater redevelopment, 80,000 square foot home improvement store. Construction began in late 2022, was completed in September 23, which was amazing for the speed and efficiency of how fast that building went up and, you know, even with that winter of last year. So again, nice store, nice features inside. So again, very proud of this with the redevelopment of that old theater site. Times Square, so we have a before and after, and as you can see, the changes were remarkable. And again, this was due to impart back in early 2023, Times Square Mall changed ownership to TS Shopping Center LLC, and the owners came into us and said, hey, we'd like to do a major retrofit, major remodeling. So what we were thinking was, for me personally, was a limited remodeling. This is an extensive remodeling. I think the before and afters, you see a world of difference, and this is what, exactly what you like to see, that kind of reinvestment or investment back in the community, back in this area. So I think, you know, our Chair can probably attest that seeing the before and after is probably remarkable as well. And we're very proud of this. We know that they've done a lot of work in the parking lot, the lighting. They also did a much needed stormwater drainage improvement in the backyard or back of the north building because of all the issues or problems with that, and they did it pretty much on their own and very efficiently. So we're very proud of working with the owners. We are working with them on a few other development deals in this area, so more to come on that. Our Johnny Cake Business Center by Opus, again, this was 112,000 square foot industrial office warehouse flex building. It was completed in 2023. We were anticipating and hoping for some tenants yet. So far, nothing has transpired, but we hope to have something very, very soon. We do get some interested calls or companies that do express an interest in it, so we're hoping that building will be filled quickly. Not to say that Frito-Lay PepsiCo is absent because they did take over the entire building here, so they are now open, and this was another 117,000 square foot office warehouse. And you'll note that they have their site very well secured and screened off for purpose, and now this serves as their main distribution center for their snack chips. So again, a great product, great building, and very proud to have them in the community. Last fall, we attended an Upennor Experience Training Center, and Upennor had, now provides for what they refer to the Experience Training Center. So this allows for workers to come in, and they basically give hands-on training or education to workers in the trades that work on this product material that they produce, which is basically a plastic PEX type pipe that we use for everyday household plumbing or business plumbing. But a great facility, had a great tour, very excited to see this, so quite an investment for them because they want to make sure that who's ever providing or using this product or installing it knows what they're doing. So this is their training center, and it's a great facility and very excited, Upennor, to have them make this investment back into the community as well. You've probably been by the fire station number two up the street here. Again, this is just an image off their website that shows, and they also have an update or briefing on the construction update, more information on there. I don't want to steal the thunder from fire station number, the fire department, but again, this is going to look like a really nice fire station when it's all said and done. Our CMF expansion, you may recall that we did also approve this, even though central maintenance facility is what we refer to as CMF. So there's a number of building improvements that are going on here. Again, things have kind of slowed down a bit because they're still working on bidding out the project and working on some kinks there, but we hope to have some stuff, or this project hopefully started by sometime this year. Also, our police operations support facility, this was sort of an add-on. Once we were able to secure the McNamara offices next door, just to the south of the CMF, and now this site will be available for a 25,000 square foot operations building. So basically, this will be where the cop cars, police cars park, and they can basically get their daily duties and assignments, so there'll be some offices there, there'll be some shower, locker rooms, everything, so they won't have to use our facilities here at City Hall, so this will primarily be their base of operations, which they're very excited to have, the police department. Applewood Point, again, you've probably seen this going up for about the last two years. It took a while to get this thing built, but at 1244 Pilot Knob Road, 98 Senior Co-op, and soon to be seven townhome apart, seven townhomes, excuse me. I believe all 98 units have been either spoken for or rented, and that was actually secured before the building was even built, so very happy to see that, too. Eagle Point, our redevelopment of the old Apple Valley Golf Course. Some of you may have been on this when we, I think there was a lot of back and forth, I see some smiles, that there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of give and take, and we came up with a great solution to go with this low-density flex, which allows for the townhomes, and now we got some really nice townhomes going in there. I believe the Phase Two is, Phase One's nearing completion, Phase Two is now underway. I believe most of the Phase One have been spoken for or paid or bought or sold, and Phase Two is also leaning towards being sold out very quickly. So again, we're building housing as fast as we can, you know, put it up, and it seems we sell them very well in this community, so good testament to the people that want to live here. Very quickly, don't mean to go through all these, but these are some of the variances you considered. I've highlighted the red indicates that that was denied or they were objected, so some of these may sound familiar to you, but again, we have a good, you know, a good track record for denying the ones that probably should be denied and approving the ones that should be approved. We also had a number of code amendments. Again, some of these were basic fixing of clerical errors. Some of them were too loud for some features like the Wings Credit Union to allow the amendment for their sign to go up to height. What they asked for was 20 feet and 80 square feet, and the council came back and said, how about 16? And they lived with 16. So again, a compromise, but it still works for them. We also had a number ceremonial ribbon cuttings and ground breakings, and I think this year was, it seemed like we were going to a ribbon cutting almost once or twice a week, it felt like. So great opportunity. If you've ever been to these, these are nice ways to get out and just meet and greet people. They're very appreciative of being here, and they're very thankful for being here, and it's good to get that recognition, and if you ever attend, you're going to get called out because it's important that you were part of a process that got them here, so in most cases. So be proud of that. So here are some names, and you probably recognize them. It's also a good place to get some good snacks and free swag sometimes when you're out there. Our ceremonials, I can't remember if all of you were there, or some of you may have been invited. On July 28, we finally opened up the Tree Top Trail in the Minnesota Zoo. This is a former monorail system, so you got about 32 feet above the ground, you got a one and a quarter mile walking path, and it's phenomenal walking that thing. So we also had a great event at opening with Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan, a number of our state representatives, so the day was officially proclaimed Minnesota Zoo Tree Top Trail Day. Again, a great day, very warm, but it was a very well-attended event. We were awarded City of the Year by the Minnesota Real Estate Journal. On the left there is our Mayor Hoopa with our planner, Alex Sharp, and they were at the event that day, and we were awarded, again, City of the Year, which is a prestigious award, we think, and a very well-deserved honor. Yeah. And just want to recognize Tom Lovelace in the middle there, kind of behind Brianna. Tom had served 28 years here, and that's a long time for most planners, so that's a great service to Tom, and we want to thank him. You also note that we promoted Kathy to City Planner in his place. We also officially named Alex Sharp as Planner Economic Development Specialist. We also hired a new planner, and her name is Sydney Strohing, and she's right to my left. Sydney's a graduate of University of Minnesota with a BS in Urban Studies. She spends most of her time with her baby Augie or August, and her fiance, Jake, I hope, enjoys the outdoors, taking her dogs for walks and going up north to visit her family. We also welcomed yours truly after replacing Bruce Snorkquist. I enjoy everything opposite of what Sydney does because I don't like to stay outdoors or take a dog on walks or visit my family. I'm just kidding. I do enjoy golf, cooking, and reading, and bathing, so beyond that, I'm okay. So thank you for welcoming me as well. Yeah, I do appreciate it. Did you guys hear that?
What?
Nothing.
I heard bathing.
I just need you for listening. So again, my report is, again, just a recap of a wonderful year. Again, my first year here has been, as they say, drinking from a fire hose, and I'm still drinking from it. I have great staff. I want to really thank them for being there to help me, again, not only my department, but the entire city staff. I can't ask for a better community to come and work for. So I hope you understand that we're very proud to work for you and serve you, and we also appreciate the level of support that you give us, and being there on that front line of what we do for planning is key, and I hope you understand your role here is never minimized or, you know, felt like it's secondary to other actions. It's very important because you are, you are those citizens and planners that we really want you to make sure that you give that great recommendation, either for or against, and we love to have you, we love to have your input. So thank you, and with that, I'm going to wrap it up with any questions, if you have any, or if there's anything I can go back to on our presentation.
Well, on the behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you guys because you are amazing to work with, and it's first and foremost, we're residents, and I have to say, after looking at all this, how proud we are to be living in Apple Valley, and thanks to you guys, it's building up and becoming even more of a wonderful place to live, so thank you to all of you. Any questions? Any remarks?
Move we approve the 2023 Planning Commission Annual Report?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion was approved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying, say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Hey, that brings us to number five. We have no public hearings tonight, and number six, nothing on action items. So number seven, Mr. Benetti, I'll bring you up again to mention other businesses.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we have our next meeting scheduled for March 20th of Wednesday at 7:00 PM, followed by April 3. Our council meeting is on March 14th and the 28th. We will expect to have, I believe, one item on the 20th, so we would hope that you can attend that meeting as well. That's it.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.